All right, six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. The first order of business is the pledge to the flag.
We just give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You approve the minutes of August twenty-fourth. Second?
Motion on second, any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Everybody? Members reports, we'll start with Lindsay.
I just wanted to thank all volunteers, how many people put in the time for Sula Days, it looks like it was super successful, very well attended, and such a good gift for the community, so everyone who had a piece in that, thank you. Because that was a lot of hard work needed to help, it really shows, so.
Second act from Lindsay, and we could at some point maybe check road signs. The ones that were taken care of, if not maybe have to stay checked, I know some speed limit signs missing, uh, just in my travels recently, doing a lot around town, there's a bunch of speed limit signs that are blocked, painted over, missing. Right on, so.
Uh, Chuckie?
What?
Anything?
No. Not worth it, I already said not worth it, oh, I've got a couple things I ain't gonna say, I'm just saying with, there's some disgruntled people, well, super shit, thank you.
That's all we want to hear about you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Kelsey?
Did you, did I, what Lindsay said, seemed like it was a really good turnout too. Um, if we see some leftover like signage for the event, do you want us to yank them or?
You can yank them and bring them to the town office, Public Works is in the process of us, they're cycling around town grabbing. Right on, uh, then I would just follow up with, right, you know, thanks to volunteers, thank you Lindsay for getting the dump tank, because I got me out of it, so, thanks so much, because I was cold, uh, but yeah, you know, a lot of volunteers, some thanks to them. Also, we'll send it to Richard, town members' report.
Uh, all of the paperwork for the Mercer real estate acquisition is signed and sealed, it will be delivered tomorrow. Um, and then at that point in time, we will have the full, uh, right to title on that property. Uh, with the one catch, we're going to help previous owner get their sign down. Um, we've got the equipment, it should be great, quick and easy, and allow them to take that, I didn't think that we had a use for that, so. Now, what we'll be doing there, and then my recommendation to the board would be to, uh, place the concept on the next agenda for what folks, um, would like to see done with that property, that's, we didn't have that mission, we've had a bunch of ideas, but start to gather, um, public feedback and maybe what we want to put out as a survey, uh, to age people's ideas, but also roles to pay, grant opportunities and things like that, so. Um, ideally, we have something in place before they have a budget, so if something needs to go to voters in March, we could do that. Uh, the fire department ATV trailer remains up to bid, that bid window closes next Thursday at two o'clock, that will be on your next, uh, agenda for consideration. Sewer commission voted to put the pump truck back out to bid, or out a minimum this time. Um, that will remain open for a minimum of thirty days, taking it to October the tenth, which would then be your second meeting in October, to conserve the award, mill stream trunk or treats scheduled out way out to October twenty-sixth, but we are collecting candy here at the office, uh, for that, so candy's not getting any cheaper, and it's tax time, so when you're in the office, bring a bag of candy. Um, and then that allows the, um, folks that are participating over there to take a little bit of load off from them, so. Uh, the bridge newsletter, the fall edition, drafting of that's underway, anybody here or elsewhere has an article of general public interest, please feel free to send it over to me, we'll print one, we can depend upon space and we're getting, uh, to a deadline of September thirtieth for submissions. Airport, at the last meeting, there was discussion about the cost of the taxi wing reconstruction, which go in the gate into the right. The project was split into two separate grants, the first was the design and permitting, as is typical for something like this, and the second is the actual construction. So the design and permitting, engineering fees, hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, our local share is a little over six thousand. The budgeted cost of construction, because that's not underway yet, is five hundred and forty thousand, or a twenty-seven thousand dollar local share, the total project being six hundred and sixty-two thousand, for which we're responsible for thirty-three thousand. The bugger here is that the actual construction in that budget is three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and engineering for the total project is two hundred and seventy-two thousand, so seventy percent of the total project cost, I'm sorry, seventy percent of construction is engineering, whereas you usually see fifteen, fifteen and is a, is an aggressive engineering fee relative to project cost.
What the hell are you doing?
We know we're getting it, uh, but the grass isn't green around the other side of the fence either, but this is the, a lot of that is attributed to the grant system that the FAA makes you go through and all of that, but we're excited. We had almost eight thousand dollars, I think it was, in engineering expense made to, that's a lot.
Like, that just seems like for two, just like someone is really like taking advantage of like, my goodness, they should have assumed it themselves.
So, that's, the federal government. So anyway, that's where we're at on that, that will be uploaded onto the minutes section of the webpage if people are curious about those numbers. Tax assistance will be on the nineteenth at eight-thirty, that is some cleanup for commitment, couple supplemental statement, and then they'll also do the municipal valuation return, which is just a standard thing, it's due by November first. Planning board will be next Thursday, that, we mentioned at the last meeting, that's the subdivision, an interior subdivision. Um, so that's four apartment units here at one Main Street, and then they're also gonna uh, have an initial discussion about redoing the subdivision, uh, in short, in zoning ordinances through a consultant. Tip advisor rule will be on September twenty-fourth for missing these things. Your, uh, real estate tax collection to date, twenty-nine percent of committed, uh, that's up four points versus last year at the same time, so we're trimming ahead. Your personal property tax collection, that's in at twenty-two percent of what was committed, uh, pretty much the difference in that versus previous year, uh, is, uh, we've received an imbalance in personal property tax already, which is substantial. Library trustees, fourth Thursday of the month. Sula Days, we've heard of already, but thank you to the volunteers supporting participating businesses and organizations that helped make it happen. Uh, I think for the first time, as long as I've been here, every member of the void has seen it at Sula Days.
Yes, it's funny, yeah, you're right.
In one layer or another, yes, always been a volunteer missing.
Yep.
Uh, and some people roll around, roll through in background, but everybody was there, uh, and so that was a positive thing. And I was looking at the picture in the hallway here of, you know, three or four years ago, of the progresses in the park, and it looked massive when you were there, when we take the overhead, there wasn't a question. And then you look at the picture that we took from the top of the playground, and it's like, wow. So, we clicked up over a thousand people coming through the gate at the airport alone, and then we stopped. Um, so we're looking probably close to two thousand people that came through that gate, or from there on Sunday, so that's good for vendors, organizations, the airport. Um, and then we had, I mean, it was a thick crowd at the park too, we didn't end up looking there, but, uh, all in all, really big win for, uh, the community, and so we'll look to do that again next year, even maybe a little better. Uh, Sandy River bank stabilization, that's just about done, just waiting for Garberl out there. Fodderall, for our project is set to begin, if they haven't already been up there digging around, they're going to be. The water disa- project on Main Street, they're gonna move into overnight work, so starting tonight, they're gonna be doing night work there to alleviate problems during the day, it's right in front of Everett's, where they kind of been causing congestion anyway, they're going right in hard.
Kind of, that's okay.
Kind of, compared to what they could be doing when they go to this location that they're gonna be working on overnight. Um, it is what it is, uh, I can tell you, we've been monitoring the traffic downtown and it hasn't been as bad as it could be, negative these lights up here and things like that, so, um, that, they initially said water disa- except two nights, the contractor said very likely it's gonna roll into next week, its productivity falls at night, yada yada, so. Um, I did send out a text message to the alerts today, um, expect it into next week, but, uh, we'll keep that updated. The downtown parking lots are gonna be excavated this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. On the cause parking lot, downtown. Contractor would like to only mobilize once, which means that all three parking lots will be shut down for the weekend, we have curbside parking and off, we're off on Welsh and Deco. If that's what we're faced with, that's what we're gonna have to do in order to rehab those parking lots. I've submitted a request, strictly via courtesy, to say, could you leave me one parking lot on the left side of Main Street on the river side, um, and then do the other, but obviously this costs mobilization. It would be a huge favor, it would increase cost, I'm gonna look at that, we have to make a decision very likely tomorrow, so we'll post notice, whatever.
Over the weekend, we have the parking lot have new belts, like, I mean, is it really, like, and with the trailers right there to walk up, like?
So, I mean, there's a restaurant there, the law office obviously wouldn't be really affected, but if we go into Monday and Tuesday, they need that the law office and whatnot. You've got the residents, they can be inconvenienced at all, but they don't even park on Welsh Street, they park on the street and they walk. It's just a lot of complexities there. Hopefully, we can, one, go back the two hour sign and just let them, but if we have to shut down for the contractor, then that's what we have to do.
Yeah.
Right, unfortunately, if you buy real estate or lease real estate, it doesn't come with parking, but that's partly why you get it, for the rate that you get it.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, so that's there, we'll communicate that one out, it'll be online, it'll be on social media, and we'll send it out through the tax system. Uh, rapid fix-up, sewer commission met last week, that's when they moved the pump truck out without a minimum. Uh, they also approved an abatement policy and an application for abatement, that's gonna create a much better level um, of clarity, transparency, consistency, whether we're reviewing it, they grant me the ability to grant abatements of up to two hundred and fifty dollars, which would help streamline response for users, instead of having to get everybody together, um, so that should be a good thing, that's all available online under the sewer section of the webpage. And then the other thing coming out of that meeting is that the GPS mapping project, where we had central lines, Bangor come in, contract's twenty-five thousand, they're supposed to come in, go out, and it's gonna be a great thing, it's gonna be online. They have not completed one-third of the work that they said they're gonna do. Uh, they have got a hundred locates, locates, I call them, and they owe us over three hundred. So, not great, and then they just wanna take what we have for as, built some swing ties on paper from the nineties, and use that to approximate where it is. That completely defeats the purpose of why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Uh, and so the commission has asked me to void their, their contract and negotiate for approximately one-third of project cost, of the contract cost, so, uh, we're gonna keep an eye on that and try to negotiate that out, we'll let you know where we end up on that. Hopefully not do an attorney bill, but nonetheless, we're not gonna afford up twenty-five thousand dollars for that. Um, spin I will keep you posted. The other side of that is the water just bought a GPS unit through a grant, and so they have offered that to us at no cost, so that progressively, we can go out, if we have downtime, we have extra staff, we can go out and hit those slowly but surely.
Okay, so that, well, that would be my question, if we're gonna stop where it is and one-third's done, that means two-thirds of the anticipated project is not gonna be completed, it's great that we don't pay for it, but like, I'm guessing that we needed to have that done, so is that gonna give us the capacity to finish the project to where we needed it or not?
So, it was a nice to have, uh, the intention behind it was to be able to televise our lines, we haven't fully televised our lines ever. So that was an opportunity there, we were looking at infiltration, trying to identify issues there, um, and then get us more accurate location. Uh, we took out mechanic street, they needed to dig up their line, and we excavated their entire front yard.
Did we find a line?
That, and it was, we went on all sides and it was completely just the other way. Um, so we made a right by them, because they're,
Yeah.
But, it's, it's a six-fold project, just the wires of this project, and then dump tank, and then the online program, I think that's part of it.
Funny mechanism for that, was that?
Who's tip?
What's about that, alright.
That's good, alright, thank you. Uh, moving forward here, uh, discussion action on September fourth, general warrant number fifteen.
Alright, and then it could be approved, general warrant number fifteen, we have, uh, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, fifty, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
I'll cycle it, but I like the two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, but.
Is a motion on the second, any discussion?
Um, I'm guessing that's the forty-five thousand.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
So that is.
That's property plus, uh, the prorate taxes, so. Wait, oh, the taxes will last for.
Stanleys? Pardon, Stanleys, that, you have some questions?
Stanleys Hall's, um, ours are sledgeup to, in a mess.
Oh, okay, alright, yep.
And the, the dard, I was just gonna, yeah, is that that equipment we bought?
No, the one that did the fodderall.
That's Sandy River.
Sandy River, okay, yep. Was he doing the other one as well, or?
Yes.
Okay, he was doing both of them.
And we've had the engineer reach out to them and ask them about Wilder Hill Road, if they would treat us well on that, because they were in town, they can use the business, and really, it's not a mobilization, and it allows us to get Wilder Hill Road done, um, that's still kind of up to be, see how their pieces fall in there.
Oh.
Bedard excavation.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 that's what you said.
They wanted to do the Sandy River and fodderall. We figured if they're here, it might be opportunistic for us, but it also could work for them and have a little extra project to get them through to the end of the season.
What'd they say? Didn't say.
I'm staying right out of it and let my engineer take care of it, because then it's actually done to due diligence and it doesn't look like anything is backdoor, it, it needs to be cleaned.
What other documents is Kiosera doing for us for five hundred bucks?
Uh, Kiosera is, um, our copiers, producer, so we got one here and then a buyer, at least.
Okay, alright.
And it's my annual overage for this building. That may just be what that is, is that just the, that's just the overage for twelve months, because.
Where's the engineer at? Where are you using for engineer?
Uh, Haley Ward, primarily, but we used, we brought in DeRago to help with Sandy River, because they had engineered that section out a dozen years ago, so it was pretty much take it, shift the plan just a little bit further, they had all the hydrology and whatnot. And then when it came to bid it out, we used them to administer that here. So I primarily have to take the reward from Bangor.
Yeah, and TDS, is, is that all of it, or is that just, okay, that's every, that's all of them lumped together?
And, and, uh, for most of them.
Okay, so is that, that's phone engine and then through TDS, is that, everybody has it?
No, the firefighter, firefighters get to do that from spectrum.
Because our A M C V is free. So we don't wanna kick that over, so we bought the river that.
We must have a dedicated line here, that's why it's so high, at the.
We have more lines here, and we also.
Alright, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, so everybody?
Uh, I'll look on it.
Skip?
Hey, Richard, a while ago, we talked probably a while ago about the trailer, they've got sold. Any thoughts, that there's a possibility you'd be able to put some drainage out through that block, is that still, was it, was it at?
So the person that purchased the property that posted me, uh, it initially sounded like it was gonna be a gift, and then it turned into money, and then it was negotiation, and then it was like, how much do you want for it, is what I asked, and then it was, how much do you wanna give me? And all the while, the engineer had been directed to design the road.
Oh.
And so it just got to the point where it's been designed, and this doesn't seem to be much of a savings anymore.
Okay.
By buying a little over that, a little more, so. The piece of property that we looked at?
Yes, when they were running a ditch on that side of it.
They were gonna go in on one side of that block and bring it back.
Right, yeah, and what did they decide instead?
It's gonna be caught and sent down there or two, largely. So it's all gonna be pitched, that, that, yeah, mostly.
If you had enough pitch to do that, then I would, we closed. Oh, it, 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 yeah.
Right, if, if we had been able to go and get it, which if we'd have.
I think we missed it on that, yeah.
It was a three-week waiting gap, is what it was, and I didn't feel comfortable going offering fifty grand for property, but I shouldn't.
So, would it sell, did it sell for fifty or less, last?
So, does, does wind have all the whole time this year?
It would be nice, good, but it's all dependent upon the contractor, and if Bedard is going to sign on it in the air, if not, it's gonna be done for spring.
Okay, I just.
I had it swatted for the spring, because it's easier for me to say it'll be done in spring, you have to give it a nice, you know.
Yeah.
By four, October fifteenth, just to.
That's probably, it doesn't like, like the logging stuff, like all the trees.
No, it's a different property.
Okay, alright.
I, I would add, a while ago, the public works department has done a fantastic job keeping that not just possible, but hopefully possible. Been doing a really good one after, every so often, every few days or a couple of weeks, whatever, rate it, whatever, and they, they've, they've kept that road very nice, for as bad a shape as that road is. They've done all that they can do. Appreciate it, by all of us.
Say some more, tear in the cemetery, that's about it, come true.
Those people don't care.
If it wastes those spring, it could be a whole different story.
Yeah. Oh, right on, okay.
This summer's great.
Thank you, anything else to public comment?
Um, is there any, and well, I, we constituent, or just Bella, is there any talk about Tyron Applewind in here? Doesn't bother me, but there's one that says, ah, Damian, you're a selectman now, is that in the plans at all?
It's not.
We can send it to the road committee, but the road committee's looking at largely through roads where there's not an alternative point of access.
There's quite a bit up in the air on that chunk of road right there too, isn't there, I mean, the holes, whether we're gonna move it over, or whether that could be done.
No, up, uh, way, way up, way up.
Oh, yeah.
If we would've got the full ask of what we'd asked for the federal government, yes.
One way up, I mean, that doesn't mean.
Right, you know, we, we're talking millions of dollars.
Oh, yeah, that guy carried on off of it. As far as I'm concerned, the roads in Argyle are so damn much better than they was forty, fifty years ago, so much smoother, I mean, and what other towns, because we have money to work. I mean, they're so much better off than they was, I mean.
And they've been on the grading this year too, I mean, the grading has been, well, I haven't heard much.
Yeah, there've been a lot of compliments on the grading this year.
I don't know who's running the grader now, but it certainly makes a big difference.
Right, yeah, yeah. Do we, what kind of budget do we have, or how many times like per year, like for like big old hill? Do we get like, was it the calcium that keeps like the dust down? Because that's like, I mean, if there's a car in front of you, you can't even see driving on that anymore, it is like a dust filter.
A lot depends on how much it rains too, I mean.
Yeah, do we have budget for that, or is that something that gets up?
It just comes out of their regular budget. I don't know when they dusted that last, I know we're talking about putting calcium equipment away right now. Uh, we were hoping to get payment on that though this year.
Really, like?
I'll add two cents to be, just be ignorant, but I can remember Stevie Bishop, I've only sold, he's gone, but he went and got all but two people, decided petition not to have that hot talk when it was built, because
I remember, yeah.
Because all the times would go too fast, but now they don't like that, a lot of them, so.
That's, that's very true.
And I'm gonna say, so, so, let them suffer a little bit.
The, this has been.
I'm suffering, you don't danger.
And honestly, that's probably.
And they could've done it so much, they could've done it.
Our complaint, yeah.
Yeah.
They could've done it so much cheaper when they're building that, what we're gonna call it now.
Yeah.
Speaking of the grain, somebody did complain about Main Street last week, said it was horrible.
Great, that's the airfield.
Not this end.
Oh, apartment?
No. The dirt.
Well, technically, we're paving right till we end, right?
We're paving to the town.
Yeah, paving, yeah, it's a town line.
It's funny, because you think we own part of it, but we don't, we're ex, we're a payman.
Call me, shout out.
It is, I think so, because, yeah.
It is.
No, no, that was all the way, almost a bear mountain, doesn't it?
No.
The line is right near there?
No, no.
So, so the pavement starts.
So right by Austin's?
Yeah, yeah. Seems weird, yeah, because we've talked about this once before.
We actually just have carved out a turnaround there, so.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
The club stops there too, we go right.
Yeah, even with the DSO, I've always, I always thought it was going out.
Yeah, almost, because you think it's where the pavement starts again, is what it feels like.
Prior to it, like a half mile prior to it, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I didn't realize that fairly it takes care of a lot.
Yeah, town limit sign, so everybody knows.
Well, that's all fair, if you don't have a sign.
They keep getting stolen, they keep getting stolen. Put a big concrete pillar that says it, they can't just.
Yeah, yeah, might not be about it, yeah.
Anybody who can put out welcome to Norwalk, kind of, three thousand friendly people, I feel like.
This is fair field, call them.
Right.
See, once you get the fair field, you can build forty-five, fifty, thirty-five.
Should just say, we don't have airfield parks.
Because it's not posted.
Uh, okay, well, we'll be forward, unless there's something else for the public comment here.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, number eight here, discussion action on donation of SCBA packs and bottles. Would you permit?
Please.
Uh, so the request is to donate our old packs that we just replaced and the associated bottles to SCTC, which is the Somerset Regional Technical Center. And Scowey, who has a brand new, not more than a year or so old, um, firefight program. Uh, they've expressed interest in wanting them, uh, so a little bit of history if I can, so those packs, they're currently sitting in storage over here at Public Works, you know, wouldn't create that review. And they were obtained by us in two thousand nine, brand new, uh, as part of a federal grant. Ninety-five percent federal AFT grant, so we paid five percent patch on that ninety thousand dollar project in two thousand nine. Um, the, the replacement packs that we just got in October, also a federal grant, another five percent, now that project was much larger, in part because of inflation, but also the compressor and fuel station were replaced this time, you know. That was a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar federal grant and about ten thousand of local length. The, just as a side note, the old compressor, if you recall, that was a long-term loan from Waste Management, we washed our hands of that Waste Management, since redonated, if that's a word, to the Temple Smithfield. Uh, so we have these old packs. There are three additions of NFA nineteen eighty-one, that's the, the firefighting standard that governs what SCBA packs have to do, so this is, and, and that standard gets revised every five-ish years. So these packs are three additions, revisions of that standard old, and, and they're not sold. Uh, nobody could use them, in fact, that the three additions old is the primary reason why we got the grant to replace them. Um, and the bottles, the air bottles, the thirty or so air bottles have, have reached their fifteen-year DOT limit, so I mean, it's just, the, these are, this is not something we can sell, the options are gonna be donated to SCTC, or donated to Waste Management, those are gonna be the two choices here. Um, they are up in storage, we're keeping them clean and, and covered, just we knew that this request would be coming, um, and it's a burning firefight program, they're wanting them. Be great for learning, put them on, take them off, turning on the bottles, turning off the, not probably great for running into a burning building, but that is not what the fire program up there is largely doing, right? Strength, teaching, learning, I think it's perfect for that, so I'd like to request that you, um, approve donating those approximately thirteen packs and approximately thirty bottles. I didn't want to tear apart the credit account again, and nobody can find a paper where we write that. So both thirteen and thirty, and we'd like to donate that, and I would say, you know, SCTC, the director is David Door, I, I need a letter, it's Richard to write a letter, uh, to him.
Yeah.
For the donation.
Yeah, no, I think that's fantastic, the board, any issues there, concerns, that I take the motion?
I'll make the motion to, uh, donate all retired SCBA packs and bottles to the SCTC firefight program.
I was checking.
Motion on the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and that's everybody.
Thank you.
Next to you.
What case education on all laws? This year, we replaced them in October.
Yeah, I just need somebody to be reserving.
So that's, right. Okay, uh, number ninety, discussion action on automobile recycling permit renewal application.
Uh, this is, uh, a standard renewal for seventy-four Smithfield Road, uh, business name has changed, our debt's automotive and salvage LLC, property is fully shielded, um, code enforcement has not inspected the property, but I drive by it, it is moved twice a day. Um, they are very responsive, uh, in their operations, when they had the fence blow down this winter, it was backed up on a phone call. Um, my recommendation to the board would be, I'm getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry, the auto recycling permit is the once every five-year permit. This was one that was granted initially through the Board of Appeals, they did remanded it back for permanent, uh, and then you had, um, granted then the automobile recycling permit, you must have the automobile recycling permit wanted to get you checked out. Again, a lot of the same conditions apply in terms of your property expectations, making it available for storage, including. Uh, again, the recommendation would be to wait for the hearing, if you've got one, there is a, I'm sure that's automobile.
So, I, I do have a question though, they're saying this is a renewal, but this is a new name, so is it a new owner, or are they just changing the name of the business?
They just, they've become an LLC instead of a PD.
Okay, so they've just, okay, alright, that's.
So that's all they changed.
Yeah, alright, I just wanna make sure those are the changes.
And they had transferred the property from one to both.
Okay, alright.
It was a, it was like a John home that had a John and Lindsay home.
Okay, and did we have no complaints or anything?
We have not had any direct complaints since within six months of the permit being granted.
Okay, so then I will make a motion that we approve, uh, the first automobile recycling permit renewal application for our debt's automotive and salvage LLC.
Shouldn't it be?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Only discussion I have is, have they been inspected this year? Has anybody been?
I, I mean, I've got the property outside, but, and I've not gone into their.
You haven't?
Okay. And I exactly pretty good track as to why.
Well, I drive by it every day too, so I keep a good eye on myself, I'm just wondering.
And I ride by about ten times a day.
It does, he does, he keeps it clean, they've done a lot in there, I just didn't know exactly what they've done, how much, and if their mission had changed when you saw stuff change, so.
It looks a lot better than something else.
I I don't know a lot about this kind of stuff, but is it like responsible of us to renew the application without an inspection or?
I would say yes, without any complaints, and they haven't generated any complaints or any number of complaints. So, and and like I said, I drive by it quite a bit, he does run a pretty clean shop there, I just, they've done a lot of improvements on the property, it does look good, I just. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
And now we're looking for motion on the junkyard renewal application.
That's correct, this is the fault.
Okay, so I am going to approve the twelve month junkyard renewal application for audits automotive and salvage LLC.
Second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And number eleven here. Uh, discussion action on community engagement position.
This is the position that we discussed initially at the last meeting. We came together with consensus that it was something that the board would like to see move forward in one way or another. Uh, the ask at the time was to review it, gain some feedback, um, things to add, leave, change. Um, and then the idea would be then to probably send it on to the TIF committee. Uh, for their review recommendation, consideration for partial funding, I think.
Can we talk about it without a motion or do we need to make a motion?
Well, probably should make a motion first.
So I'm going to discuss the community engagement position.
I'm curious about the like, what are we planning to put for, uh, like desired education, knowledge, skills and experiences, like X there. And the experience managing youth recreational programming, imagining you wanna put more.
They covering a lot of territory there.
Tough, is there a degree or a education level that makes you? Better than someone else? Job right here, it's a pretty, pretty odd job, it's not like. Richard, so to speak, you know what I mean, where you need some education and should probably be able to spell and all that and stuff, uh, but this one is a little different.
Well, my concern is if we have this as a salary position at forty-five thousand. I, I'm pretty sure the state has just increased what a salary employee has to hit, it's like fifty-two, some, it's in the fifties now. Whatever it is, it's more than forty-five, so this actually wouldn't be accurate if we're doing it from a salary position standpoint, so that's something you have to look at. Because that could exponentially increase, I mean, we're looking more at like mid-fifties, so we have to pay someone, we need to be. I don't, I don't know if that goes a metric, I just, I know that that has increased, um, by a fairly significant amount.
And it was gonna increase again.
Yeah, yeah, so this wouldn't be an accurate portrayal of what the expenditure would be for that position if we're going salary.
It depends on if it's part-time or full-time.
We're saying forty hours, we're saying it's full-time, so that means we have to adhere to the other stuff, so it's.
So you just have to refigure and give a rate to it and up to.
I think that we maybe make it not a salary position and do forty hours and we can pay an hourly rate. If that forty-five is the number we're comfortable with, then we stratify that out to get an hourly wage instead of trying to do it as.
A salary, non-exempt employee is fifty-eight thousand.
That's quite a bit more than that, so we do need to like, you know, through the fourteen grand that we want, I mean, so. So that would have been a top one budget wise to try to.
No, use some flexibility too, how much they work, if they wanna be part-time versus full-time. I'm not saying you, you don't need one way or the other.
Well, it's just like, we need to be out right here, like we need to make sure that we understand it, so.
Totally, what's the thought on an hourly wage?
I mean, like, just to hide out forty hours for forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand fifty-two by forty. I can't get that in my head, but it is long, let's see here.
Yeah, which is, I'm just not.
Twenty-one or twenty-two bucks an hour, I think.
Certainly could be swayed to go more or less, depending on the position.
And that there needs to be overtime, whatever, um, but yeah.
And so, uh, we would leave it up to them if they wanted to be full-time or part-time?
I think initially we're looking for forty hours, but you know, if you find the perfect applicant and they can only do thirty-two, I don't think that extra eight is the, is the, you know, the difference. How we can hire you, because you can't work those extra eight, this is a very unique and you new position for us, and I think what's kind of gonna.
I think we just need to make, just so it's not like salary, I mean, it can be thirty-five, it can be forty-five hours, I just think we need to add a town. So that we can control our budget, understand where we're gonna be at, we need to like do it there. If we need to like increase like more a little bit hourly in order to keep or track someone, we can do that, but like. Just to start out of the gate knowing we're gonna have to pay fifty-eight if we make them like salary. Cause it's not like we're gonna be looking salary to, you know, you really do that to entice someone to be able to get fifty hours, fifty-five hours when they're salaried sometimes. I don't think we need that, and since we don't need that, we're gonna put ourselves into like a box where we can't pay less than that, so. Yeah, I think we go hourly because sometimes maybe forty-five hours a week, sometimes maybe only thirty-five and they can't.
But that's the benefit of salary below the exempt cap, right? So you're looking at fifty-four thousand is the threshold for salary, but knowing that. A week like this week, they'd be working with Sula days, so that's gonna be a fifty or sixty hour week, you know, a time and a half on all of that over. Whereas. And then they could flex the next week, right?
Yeah, I just don't think we have enough weeks for what would be having that much expenditure that'll make up for another ten grand in salaries for the year. But, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I just, I mean, like, we have to call it like four.
It's, it's definitely a toss for sure.
Is there like a seasonal opportunity, I know we kind of have stuff year round, but.
Could we still do an hourly even with a flex in there too, that if they work this many this week and.
It just frees us up a little bit more.
Certain time of the year that's slow, they maybe cut back to twenty hours for a few weeks just to even it out.
Yeah, yeah, I think that we just don't paint ourselves into a corner as much if we do an hourly. Um, and we can obviously take care of someone, but that way we're not just like nailed in, nowhere to run, have to pay that amount. Especially with a new position.
Teachers don't make that much, so like, how do we get sneaky like that, so that sneaky is not the right word? Do I just, it sounds complicated doing salary. Whereas I agree, sorry, complicated doing hourly, whereas if we did salary, it's just like clean, do your job.
It's a new position, I think we should know, like, I think it'd be good for us to know what they're doing for hours, only because it's such a new position. And I'm sure there's some way to like log hours, so we can even then like stratify it out, like, you know, they're doing twenty-five hours a week on just parks and rec stuff or ten hours, like. To be able to have someone taking care of their hours, but also knowing what those hours are being allocated to, I think that's a good way for us to figure out like. Maybe where we need some more support, maybe there's more infrastructure, I think hourly, at least, we can always go salary, but I think hourly starting out for such a new position. I think that we're gonna be surprised about how few hours we need or how many hours that we need and where those hours be spent, I feel like we're not gonna be able to accurately predict that.
I don't feel strongly either, right, cause I'm not the one who's going to.
Really, I, there's, there's a good argument to be made for both ways, it's really just not knowing, uh. Really what the, the, the capacity of this unknown person is gonna be, you know, if they have a. An administrative touch, it can be a great help to Richard as well, that's run our programs, I, maybe they, they always get forty, fifty hours a week. But if it's more recreation based and more, you know, less administrative stuff and more part-based, and so it really depends on the individual, so I, I'm, I'm. I'm comfortable either way, but I do like Lindsay's point of starting with it as an hourly, there's a dollar a month given at forty-five thousand for forty hours a week. Do the math yourself, you know what you're getting paid.
And then we leave it open for perfect candidates on thirty-two, and then whatever the TIF.
Has to make salary, it's, you know.
It would sting to have that job done very well and well executed, and it only takes thirty hours a week, and we're paying someone. Fifty-four, the what a teacher's making to do that, I, and after a year, like, like I said, we'll figure out a lot of stuff, we might very well realize. We really need to make the salary employ, this is what we need to keep, and like, we can do, we can pivot, but this is so brand new, like, we have no idea.
And I think it's pretty enticing, right, at the job that we have listed here for twenty-two bucks an hour?
Yep.
Right here in town, if you're a local person, it's really a great deal.
A lot of flexibility, yeah, I think it's great.
You're gonna put that on the wire, or you're gonna, you decide that.
I'm not sure, where do we stand with that, do we?
If, that's gonna be, we need to nail this down, we need to send it to TIF, get TIF's opinion on it. TIF's proposed changes, then it's gonna come back here, decide if we want to accept TIF's proposed changes, and then. When are you gonna really start the position? You're gonna run on a trial basis, right?
Right, and we're not bound to ask the entire town whether we want this new position. By any means, we could decide amongst ourselves that we wanna build this, create this position and build it without going to the board, yes.
Yes, but they could totally fund it, they could even say we're not gonna appropriate TIF on such shit.
Very, okay.
Yeah. That's fair, I mean.
I'm fine asking the board about that, I guess, curious as to.
I think we get it somehow like that, like we just discussed to TIF, to get their opinion, to get it back to us.
Or I think they approved it, I never said, I never said they didn't prove much or anything, yeah.
And I, this looks good, I, I don't see anything that I don't feel should be on here, or you know, I, I'm. Yeah. I don't know if anybody else has a recommendation or something else they wanna see on here?
I mean, I would put desired education, a bachelor's degree, that's just me, not required, there are certainly people who. Could do a better job than someone with a bachelor's degree, but for the level of like. Self-management they're gonna have to do, community engagement, we're expecting.
I want to be able to run something that handle on it, or need a little bit of groundwork or something, I mean.
I just think about some of the. We have someone who's running the program extraordinarily well, that maybe doesn't have that education.
Right.
And doing a way better job than maybe, I'm not saying specifically, but safer. And since Skowatka is paying someone full-time and they have a degree, I think, I don't know that, I mean, like, I think if we put desired or.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, desire, but that's required.
But not required, like experience and the right personality and right connections, I think is gonna be more important than the education, like capabilities and. Understanding is gonna be.
I mean, quite flexible.
I thi- I think we do need to be quite flexible, I don't want anyone who maybe doesn't have a degree to not apply, that would do an awesome job, that would be my only worry with that. Is that we're gonna have someone who's like, well, I didn't have a degree and I didn't wanna even like put my hat in there, cause I didn't think that they would accept me, you know what I mean, like. I don't know how we, obviously.
Can you list the bachelor's degree? Not required.
Yeah, but if you look, it says desire versus required.
Sure that the person that doesn't have the degree, we put bachelor's degree and then.
I think that most places like say that.
You know, in parentheses, but not required, something to that effect, I don't know, does that? Kind of give you both, you're looking for that, so to let those people that know that I'm interested, I think I have some other qualifications, it's not required, so yes.
I don't know. Obviously, if we know people, like, we should be encouraging them to apply, who we know would be a good fit, despite what they're, I know, like. I guess if I just graduated from college and I was looking for a job and it only said high school graduate, I would feel like that was not a good fit for me.
What's was tough, I know.
You know what I mean?
With a bachelor's for this, and then I know an older person with no degree, that would be.
Degree or similar experience, I think that's what he usually says, like, degree preferred or similar experience, I think that's what you kind of have to have, like, with something like that.
Yeah, or maybe that's a better way to word, something like that, whatever.
Yeah.
I just like, I. I'm sure there's a Skowatka, fresh high school Skowatka graduate who'd be perfect, but I'm not sure we want all of them applying.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
And that it, but like I do, I wonder too, like something like that, am I, do they have the organizational, the managing, like, skills force like that? To actually like organize other people that like they're so fresh, they haven't been managed themselves, to manage other, that's my only.
I made the same argument about not hiring Richard, he's done a fantastic job since, so, if you never know.
But at the same time, an application is an application, we can weed through those.
Yes.
True, the interview process, do we, do we narrow it down so far as looking at all these other jobs that? Nobody's even applying for these days, you put a job posting out there and you get one. Don't wanna narrow it too far.
Put this out and no one will follow.
Yeah, I do think that's a possibility, cause we, there's not a huge like direction, like, we're not even sure how many hours they'd be working. Like, so like.
But this is gonna be.
I would be nervous.
Interest me and.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hoping, right?
At least.
I, I think we need to make sure that we're highlighting the flexibility of this position, um, because that, I think, is what's, I mean, what I keep finding more and more, like. In my own, like, professional capacity is that it's less about the dollar that they're getting paid now, and it's more about that flexibility and that like work-life balance and like that ability to. Sort of create the environment and the work schedule that you need to like be happy and like. And, you know, I bet people are turning down sixty-five grand starting pay to take something less because they've got, you know. More time off or better days off, or they can flex stuff around, I think this will be something like that, where maybe it's. You know, forty-five thousand isn't like a ton, it's like fifty-five or sixty, but in the same sense, if they've got kids and they can do it while the kids are at school those six hours. That's huge for like, and you know what, like, that mom doesn't wanna give up the time with the kids and I get that, like, I was messing up myself taking a few years off, I would have. Done that if they were at school, because then I still could have been like the mom that needed to be, but also could be contributing financially, and most places won't let you do that, so that's a huge benefit and like. It's a lot of smart moms that are making that same decision, like, let's get one of those gals, cause you know what, they're gonna be able to manage everything, cause they already are. Um, and that's what I think we need to highlight on this, is that it's fun, it's involved in the community, it's something where a lot of these things are going to. They can bring their children with them while they're working, so there's like that capacity for flexibility with your hours, flexibility in your job environment. Um, and if they need to be doing stuff at eight-thirty after everyone's in bed, they can do that, so I think that this is something, and I'm not just saying we want a mom, but like. This is something where like, yes, like a person at college might say like, oh, we're an ex-husband, but like, you know, a mom might be like, I can make that work for me.
No, I, I like that.
Moms encouraged to apply, honestly, like, who manages stuff better than like a busy mom, no one.
Okay, all right, um, anything else you guys wanna see on here?
I'm gonna build in the requirement, uh, uh, the degree as an option under desire and okay.
I'd be curious if they, they, yes, and again, I'm not trying to say a fancy piece of paper makes you any more.
We did do a motion just.
The sign of duties like, or, I don't know where we would put it, but, um. Like, how flexible it is, there's nothing in here about, like, I mean, work schedule, I think flexible work schedule, you know, like, maybe we. Extend on that just a little bit more, like, um, just so it's. There are certain events that might be on the weekend, might be at night, but, you know, for the most part, getting your stuff, I'm like, when you.
I feel like it's implied and if people are interested, they'll ask more questions.
And then, once it may require some evenings.
It says that, it says like after hours.
If not, may, is, you will be required.
Yes, yeah, like one of those week, flexible work schedule, then maybe put something in there.
Don't shoot them down too quick, at least get them in the door.
More than willing to work around, you know.
There's certainly.
Right, right, and that's certainly kind of the one flexible piece, but really.
Flexible might be seen as like work from home, something like that, like me.
All right, but this does have the option for that too, though, there's no, nothing saying that this job has to be done inside this building, whether it's done at your home or at a Sula or at. Hardee's or wherever you end up on that day, right?
Like, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, if you list this on Indeed or something like that, how are we gonna stand out in the whole sea of things, like, what's gonna grab someone, because we want as many people. Oh, yes, that's like, you know, like, do we have somewhere embedded into it where it's like mom hours or like something like that, so that when someone does a Google search or something like that, or does. Something where they stratify it on like Indeed, that we are getting those people that are specifically looking for those like. Types of hours, like, how do we make ourselves more searchable, more like clicked on and more people looking at our.
Typically, it's like remote or remote hybrid type stuff and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We take a job description and approve the job description before we talk about posting and recruitment, we do want to recruit, they recruit. Uh, to me, you've got a local member right here, and how many people are already interested, like, you have maybe existing employees that might be more volunteers, that might be willing to pivot. But then you've also got athletic education programs that are at places like Farmington, where that seems like a pretty decent feeder for potential. athletic education programs that are at different places like Farmington, where that seems like a pretty decent feeder for potential, um. Yeah.
Yeah, if we're not worried about having to like, put it out there, so the last one, like the economic development, like, we just, it was like, whoa, whoa, we got nothing. So I just wanna make sure that we are at our capacity, if we put this out there, we don't get the response back that we are doing the right things, make sure that we can attract as many candidates as possible, so that we can pick the best of both of our needs. So what are you looking for for a motion on this one?
Nothing.
Okay.
No, I didn't.
You're good, right?
Then get up and send it over to Joe. Okay, update on land use violations and junk yards.
The office not sending that out, instead of request to be on your agenda, I will not have an update for you on them aside of say that I am not aware of that that's coming back in violation in the last few months, um, so this will be placed on our next regular, our definitely.
How was it? I wanna ask that, um. It's going, code. And how are you not? We, I mean, do we not have, do we not know where the junk yards are standing right now and what we have? And how is code doing with all of you?
So we'll walk the fine line, so that's right, okay. Uh, we have a junk yard tracker that I instituted probably a year, a year and a half ago, where it gives you the, it has an identifier that the owner's name, has a location map lock, uh, first report for a site visit, for recent site visit, current state of action, most recent notice of violation issue. Um, and the goal is to at least try to see a moving needle with all of these properties, and it's not easy, but this is fifty of them, documents, right? And so when I was intercode officer, I was running around and I'd just grab a picture over here and say, hey, zig-zing. And send them a certified letter and just say, hey, print this up, this is what we've got, this is what you came here, and by the way, you could go to superior. Honestly, it's a pretty effective tool for eleven dollars and a temple. So we cleaned up three, maybe four, uh, and they're high visibility, and we'll look at the source inside of it. The needle's not moving because we're, you need to get certifications onboard, and we've got, uh, right now, we've got licensing for plumbing that's there, uh, and that's the goal line, the code enforcement, uh, licensed certification is not there yet, um, so that ties our hits in terms of, uh, well, eighty K. Really, the eyes have been taken off in general, land use violations, and that's, this board is at the largest mission associated with the code office is get these land violations, land use violations back in line, and it's just been a struggle with this. I'm stretched thin, um, I'm not acting code officer anymore, so I can't just blow them, start. So that, um, it's the town ordinance is enforcing that, so, um, it's been reiterated and reinforced that this board is passionate about junk yards and watching the despair, but it's just getting those, do you feel that we're on the right path
to getting to where we want to be, or do we need to make changes so that we can continue, stop moving forward? I mean, have we become stagnant and we're not gonna move forward?
No, we're moving backwards because we're not moving.
Right.
You know, it's, it's unfortunately, because we're seeking out certifications, we're probably should have held the title of internal, but longer while we onboarded somebody that was then going to get certifications, that would give me the legal authority to initiate these proceedings, um. But if you're not sending notices, you're losing it, like.
Yeah. So that's like, you think of two that are growing off the top of your head in my day jobs.
Even if we're not going to court, if we're not going to court, or we're not really going to knock on your door, if they get that registered mail, they know that we haven't taken enough off, right? And I think candidate, like, the message that we're sending right now through no action is that.
I think that we're okay, yeah.
You know, and that's been the message here for a long, long time, right? And we really only had a couple of years.
Something there, it's a mechanism.
Back to everyone.
Without putting more on your plate.
Right, I mean, I'm just, at, at this point, kind of, I'm probably just gonna start say, I'm going to start reissuing notices of violation development and just have a new employees sign on them and send them so that they're compliant with statute if they ever get to court, but, you know, that's just me going out with my first best and taking pictures of your cars, putting them in, right? But until we get certifications, that's how far out we see from certification. Uh, one to two exams.
Is that person, then also, um.
Under code. We can't talk specifically. Yeah.
Would our next certified, um, code enforcement officer have the capacity to issue, um, like, warnings, letters for like the noise violations for like excessive dog sound and things like that? I, I don't know if more complaints are coming in, but it definitely feels like, um, the depot street noise is getting more significant, and I know for personally, even as far as ways, it's causing an issue at my own house and my own animals now too, because it's so much louder, um, and I don't know why that would be, I don't know if there's more animals there, but it feels like it's getting a bit more intense.
He's a worshipper. Well, that's right, that's a whole nother one.
Yeah.
The ACO has the anxiety issue.
It just made me think, going to the junkyard like that, like, I mean, might have been going nuts and not going, like, causing like, a lot of.
Charges the market and you're done.
You remember to bring that one.
More difficult, like, yes.
Under other business, that animal control under other business, we can discuss animal control.
Okay.
Uh, but as far as for.
So our code enforcement can't do anything, we don't have any noise ordinances that code enforcement wouldn't be responsible for, that's only animal control?
Uh, unless it was construction noise, but we don't necessarily have a noise ordinance against construction noise in the morning or evening, um, it may be something about ten o'clock or nine.
That's.
I mean, we don't have that, I mean, so disorderly conduct thing is the only thing that would fall under, and there's no set time, it's kind of an unwritten rule that.
Water bill was it? I know it's.
Anything like six or seven.
Can I just start, I think it's before six AM or after nine, you have one of those water bills.
Yeah, and then so as far as.
But you'd have to do a specific town ordinance for that.
Dog thing is, it's forty-five minutes, right, of continuous.
Isn't it? And, and I thought it was a complex, it's something.
Not speak, right, I don't have any words, but it's sustained, it, it, the, the language is there.
And it's for no reason. I'm pretty sure our statute, uh, does, do we have as much anymore, but it's for no reason. So if there's a, somebody walks, walks by the house and the dogs bark for that reason for five minutes, there's a reason the dog barked. It's not just for no reason at all.
It's like, like eight-thirty, nine o'clock every single night, because when you're trying to let your dogs go, so you can go to bed and they will go to bed, and then you're getting up at midnight, yeah.
I can not take it off on the, but we will call violations, how's that? The largest generator of animal complaints in this town is on depot street, no, it is, they will violate.
Who else would know?
Dozens a week.
Is it the same, is it the same person?
No, I.
Uh-huh.
It's just the same person?
And there's a small group of persistent individuals against another individual.
I know who you're talking about, yeah, right.
Yeah, let's do it, cause like, I mean, it's the one that I hear, you're on rivers with sound travels and it's next to a bunch of houses that place, it's not a lot of houses in the physical like.
No, and it just takes a little bit of due diligence by both the people that are being bothered and our animal control officer to actually have anything come to fruition. But as long as they're considered hunting dogs, there are maybe exceptions that are held for.
Do they ever have to hunt to be considered that?
Though, it's nineteen eighty-seven, same conversations that had in this town and nothing has changed, that's, you know. So, on that, uh, so with junk yards and stuff, uh, we'll just schedule to have an update.
I, what I, what I'm gonna do for you next meeting is, I'm, I, I'll make the request when I see code enforcement to next, but I'll give you your last one that you've seen, junkyard track, you've seen this track before.
Yes.
Right, but I'll give you the new one, and we'll zero in on where the needles move or where they've gone backwards, and if you want to aim, uh, I mean, everybody's got, we'll send them the list.
Is there?
Then let me know.
Is there anything we can do in our travels to assist with that? Not that we're sending letters or.
I mean, uh, if you.
For a legal authority, I mean, just.
If you have a, seriously, if you have an iPhone and you want to text to me a photo of a property and you can catch three unregistered motor vehicles or a pile of discarded plumbing or material for, yo.
It's, I mean, we know what you need for that.
There's a pile of scrap metal. A pile of scrap metal, if you can send that to me, it will have the timestamp on it, because I have an iPhone and an iPad, and I can put that into the document, I can cite the last.
Yeah, just anything if.
And I can send it without leaving the office. So that just saves me mileage and running around to go grab that kind of stuff.
Okay, that's, yeah.
I mean, that in our travels, if we happen to come across something that fits.
Yeah.
Right, especially if it's water on here to provide me with an update, they'll insert into a tracker, it'd be host helpful, yeah, and see a lot of three D cars coming in and they're already at junkyard, you're like, hmm, should I take a picture and send it to Richard?
Can you forward that to us in any, so we're just aware of it?
Yeah.
Cause I'm sure a lot of them are probably ones that we go by all the time and.
You're coming, you're doing.
Just to help, it's always a plan, we'll be proactive in something that we're passionate about.
I don't think I've ever seen one in a couple of years, three of them, fifteen or maybe.
Yeah. I mean, some places, the way it's always looked, it's always overlooked.
Oh, right there, okay, um.
There's two actually, sorry, by each, but I mean, these are the ones down here, there's one of the six of them, those are ones that I cleaned up. One of them was good fortune, the property was sold, but the other ones were just like, you sent them the letter and they called panicked and what can I do, and it's like, okay, this, this, and then again, okay.
And the list of stuff that you have to average, is that in the ordinance? Or?
In terms of.
For what we're looking for?
We, we, uh, got rid of our ordinance.
Got it.
The ordinance was loosey-goosey, it didn't match statutes, we're right back to statute, which provides the plumbing, uh, materials.
If that's something, can you send us that in that email as well?
Yeah.
Just so I know exactly what I'm looking for.
In my book, I'm putting it into the next newsletter.
Oh, perfect.
And honestly, it's probably causing more hate discontent, but it's gonna be one of those things where, do you have a neighbor?
Yeah.
And just send this up. Is, you know, I like that.
Sorry, too, no?
I know.
County cleanup. Bunch of pigs out there.
It'll be me, but that's.
I don't know, I just don't like the like.
I'm just going.
And I think we talked about.
Chattering on each other.
Look, look at, look at fear for the message, look at down there, that guy.
I have had no complaints about my pigs, but.
I know.
The pigs.
I don't know if you have, but.
No, I just.
I have.
Those are not free range.
I just don't get C tops over here.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so that's everything on that, and your updates at our next meeting, uh, perfect, okay, uh, update on infrastructure, construction projects and downtown.
All of this is tough, so downtown is obviously ripped up, uh, the water district is working on their project, um, that's gonna be about another month. And so when I called in to get a timeline on that, uh, I called as a courtesy because we need to be paving our parking lots downtown. We talked about that briefly earlier, so when they said another month, I'm like, oh, I'm paving and we can't wait that long, so sorry about your luck, but do the best we can to reward you, but we're coming downtown to pave my parking lot, so, uh, the water project is expected to go another month. Our downtown parking lots are expected to dig up this weekend and have hopefully all paved by Tuesday or Wednesday or next week. There's that potential there to close all those parking lots, previous dimension, we'll make that, um, you know, the Sandy River project that is wrapping up here in the next week with that Godrail and Fowler Island will probably go to the first of October. Looking ahead to next spring, is the water project on Upper Main Street, Chuck might be familiar with that, um, that is the moving over of the line from underneath the road or further up into the field. Um, the hope was that that would get done this fall, but it's looking less and less likely, the project has been evented, so after talking to Dave this afternoon, um, we're thinking that that's gonna tear out Upper Main Street, um, from the pump house up to the cemetery early spring, May or June, and then it could go longer, um, depending, but they really wanna get that technical pipe back from the river down to the flats as early as possible, then we're looking at Main Street sidewalk's opening up in the spring, and that's gonna be probably a two-year project, so, um, there's that, right now I've tentatively penciled in the Wilder Hill, we'll see June and July, that's just a ballpark, um, but again, I'm not willing to commit that to this fall or something like May. Those depend on the winter that we have, and then Main Street is a middle paved project, and that's looking like it's gonna be midsummer of next year as well. Um, and then under twenty-six, we haven't got it with the road committee, um, you know, we're looking at things like Bayble Hill Road, paving with that from end to end, um, picking up any of the loose centers we've talked about, um. I'll say side streets, loose side street, well, it's funny, there's a couple, yeah, yeah, blue streets, I'll say, like, uh, Beach Shore Extension, Independent, Storage Street, things like that, for all the outliers that are kind of by themselves, the road committee likes to see some loads picked up, and then you've got maintenance, uh, so, you know, we've got Wade Street is a nightmare, that's another project, Old Street, things like that, but road crews are gonna have to get together on that, and I suppose I would have pulled together budget for the year, to try and. Everybody's gonna have to do this, and hopefully it'll update, keep that on there when we get more things to do.
Right on. Uh, other business, the board having anything for other business? Animal control. Has anybody else got calls about animal control and them being non-responsive? I've taken several about, in specific animal control, you call, you get nothing, they can't show up, um, we're constantly running into this, we've switched animal controls three or four, I don't even know how many times, but we seem to run into the same problem where they're just non-responsive, um.
Who oversees them?
They don't really have any oversight, if you will, I mean, they're.
Sure, they, they.
Some are.
Can be, right?
Oh, they do.
They are rule level, which is why I need to be careful, but they're governed by animal welfare laws.
Okay.
Title seventeen is what it is, which is state law, and so I'll be candid and say, the system itself is rotten from the top down. Uh, Buzz is a wonderful guy.
Oh, yeah.
But the animal welfare program at the state under Department of Agriculture is useless. No disrespect to the individual employees that work there, but there's two of them, and they're reinventing all these new systems when the old one there is sort of broken, they're not willing to call for help on all areas, they don't come, and it's.
Also recurring issue, chickens and dogs.
But as far as this town, it's every town. Is there ever been? Have we ever looked at maybe doing countywide stuff, like portions of the county and being a full, I guess it has a full-time ACO, then that's phenomenal, I granted, we're not the city, but if all the towns in certain areas get together and we each put in so much, because we're paying that anyway, and we're actually getting the service.
That's really what it is right now, except we're all being as individuals.
Right, we're doing it individually and nobody's getting service.
Right, because I mean, I think our current one does like four or five towns, if you call it, it's listed right off on a state.
No, that's all, we're not even on there, I think you have to tell them right there, too. Is what he's covering, because people keep putting it and you can't find it.
Right, and I don't, what, what's the dollar amount we're lauding for that position?
Next to nothing.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, he takes his monthly sum and then he backs off mileage, so, uh, what is the number right now? Forty bucks? Forty bucks a month, and then we pay mileage out of that, or whatever's left to match, we pay him in his way, see, right?
So nothing wrong's kind of on the way. We need to figure something out that works for everybody, but mainly.
For sure, yeah.
Because every town around here, I mean, just appreciate it, yes, it's the same thing, it's.
Yeah.
But if finding a grieving dog on your doorstep, you need someone to come help you with that.
Well, there's two there, north of, that's off.
You're very kind for allowing dogs to be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I have, I found a dog on the, in the middle of the road between New Sharon and Farmington, couldn't get ahold of either of them. I actually talked to the select board chair of New Sharon, because the town office was like, you'd have to get it approved by the select board, and I was like, well, this is silly, and. I didn't hear from the ACO for two hours.
See where it could lead, because, I mean, I've covered one recently, I was covering shift and guy called in, I won't say what town it is, it won't point anybody, but had two expensive rabbits that he raises for me that are expensive, killed by the neighbor's dog. ACO was called, said, take a couple photos, send them to me. There's no response, no nothing.
Yeah.
They then called in to especially, hey, I never, I got a phone call, that was it, I'm not happy with that, and as a resident, you shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Uh, that was my, I charged the neighbor, you know, for it, there's, there's charges that can be done, um, and I think if we had somebody that does this countywide or half the county as their full-time job, they might take a little more, and not that Buzz doesn't.
Yeah, they'd have the capacity.
The capacity, the knowledge, and stuff to follow through, it's just something to explore, and maybe it's been done before.
Yeah.
Cause that's one of our biggest obstacles, that this one we're done, so you've got your ACO and you have a hard no timeline, one, let alone a backup.
Right.
What's the training that's required for that? Like, is that just?
All hours a year, deadline. Own a filthy.
Yeah.
But then I could take it one step further, if you've got somebody that's that involved in it, they could also be there, get their part-time certification to build the X, Y, and other things on the other side of that, um.
Katie Clark, I remember the times I helped you.
I mean, I was president of Katie Clark, sorry to go too reasons, one was this, one was code enforcement.
Well, here we are, two for two tonight. Well, here we are, two for two tonight.
Code didn't overturn it.
They have the best of intentions when they try to do code, and I thought.
It's coming back on board as well.
Yeah.
It's coming back on.
Yeah, it's.
That might be right up their alley for animal control, if that's something they need.
I do think, but it's worth the money, honestly, like.
Just something to explore, is there something that can be?
I, I can tell you it won't be popular with the county commissioners.
Well, sure not.
So.
However, if we get a hold of municipalities in the county, every last commissioner would use this, see if they don't support it. Yeah, because all of this is coming back on these guys, these guys don't want dogs, like, are people bad, man?
Well, we actually have the policy, we actually have the policy not to, because of, we've had seat belts and seats chewed in the purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we.
So, I think I'll draft something, not to push it off our plates, but, you know, it's not just us.
No, oh, yeah, no, it's, it's.
No, and.
So, and address it to the commissioners and say, hey, I have to come talk to you, or you should come talk to us, but if we can't get to everybody else.
And I don't, do we want to look at maybe funding ours a little better, or having a discussion with our current? To see if there is, uh, wait a minute.
No, 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 because we've done that before.
Yeah.
And what do we do, we go up, we go to a higher position, then we don't get one, and we're at the budget level in the back. We can't sell money at this table, right, because it's not a solution.
What's your big problem up to, up to this? I mean, that's a long way from home, isn't it?
We're not getting into individual situations, right?
But I mean, that's a good place to have dog, yeah, any place, I would think.
That's a public service, I'm sure you've heard, I get.
There are a large number of complaints about dog barking, uh, that are very well documented and thoroughly documented. Uh, video, audio, in writing, but primarily a small number of individuals, however legitimate. We've got dog bites, we've got dogs getting other dogs, um, and it's the nature of the business.
Yeah, because, right, because she runs a big business, they have dog.
But anyway, we're not here to talk about specific individuals or businesses, or the ten people that we pay trust.
Well, is it, I'm surprised.
I, based on the stuff that I know I've seen online, there's a massive amount of animals that are just cruising around. I think that everyone is concerned for it, like, I know that every time I see the mastiff in the German shepherd is posted being somewhere close to my house, I know my dog, I'm gonna have a fight, I'm gonna have, so like, and it's repeat things like that, I think that everyone's concerned about it, like, I think that public support will be there to get a lot more.
Yeah.
You know, I have animals, I want to get loose, like, believe me, like, I, you know, I've been on neighborhood watch because my horse is in the middle of the road, like, I get, I'm not like judging, but we do need, like, there needs to be some sort of like a help, especially when it's like animals over and over again that posing worse to themselves, other people's animals, like cars, like, and we just don't really have anything to do, like, what are we supposed to do, I don't know how to help these animals, like, and, and for me, I was just like, being, makes me like super sad, I don't know what to do.
Um, well, for an instance like that, it's, you see these same dogs open over again, now they're charged, right? Now they go to court, well, the court system is the one.
Yeah.
They're barely once just bothered by law enforcement, legitimate traffic violations or things like that. And so that's a code thing that we've never got over, and the system is weaker because of it. And so my solution shouldn't be judge and jury, but we pick people like that up and we send them to Somerset, if they'll take them, and it starts at twenty five dollars. And they go back again, and I call them, I say, okay, can you double it, and it's fifty, and we pick them up, we take them, okay, now it's a hundred.
Yeah.
But they don't want the dogs there, so eventually they just say, no, no, just take the dog back, please, we don't want to see them. And they're very limited by their capacity. And the fact that that's what the county served by is unfortunate, I'm trying to, they're.
Oh, I wonder if we have the ability to make temporary housing for things like that, at the places like that, keep getting complaints that are building bigger places, like, can we farm and stuff like that, to have a kennel place that can hold them until and do something like that, so there's at least a safe spot in the land if we can't take it to our county shelter, can we?
I think the three J's, I think, free zone. As long as the housing is.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I need to do.
We've had a couple of our name visitors.
Yeah. Yeah.
Might be a good something to talk about on our next meeting, just revisit animal control, kind of stew on for the two weeks.
What our options are.
Yeah, yeah, that's more of a question, really, what are our options are, if we decide to do something different, or if you feel like there's a good, you want spots from the surrounding towns, yeah.
And, and honestly, too, like, I mean, if, I think everybody wants the same thing, if there situations where the containment of the animal or like the building, like public care, like, we have ways to help with something like that, to, I don't know, we have any sort of funding mechanism to help to like keep them in spaces and things like that, that we can offer to people who maybe are trying their best but are just falling a little bit short with the ability to contain.
People that let the dog roam on the street.
Yeah.
Uh, would not benefit by you giving them, no, they don't.
Chicken, free range chickens, right, yeah.
They would benefit by us organizing a playground for animal center, probably.
Those chickens, yeah.
Free range chickens, you can have your chickens, but keep them all mine on.
Never complained about my chickens.
Actually, I did, I did, yes, yes.
Then I forgot back to us.
My tenants liked them, so it wasn't a big deal, but like, me personally, I don't.
Yeah.
Did your chickens, your dog, keep them in your yard, you know?
I'm okay.
But for me as an individual, there's no one to call, you, you call, you don't get a response, or they call you back in four hours and I've already kicked your chickens. I'm like, I'm gonna try to run them over with my lawn mower, you know, it's just, because that's what you do when you don't get help, you take things into your own hands. And that's the last thing we want, so, yeah, I think we'll just revisit this.
Yeah, we don't need you more to give us one.
So moving forward here.
Oh, God.
We will go into executive session.
I need a motion, a discussion, actually, we're.
Motion in second, uh, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, that's everyone.
Uh, and then, so this is a, excuse me, a road that's in the Bear Mountain Plan of Lots. So that's the subdivision down off from Old Schoolhouse Road, uh, over into Fairfield Town Line, you have the diagram in your book. Uh, long before that, it was, what do we name it, is I wanted to name it something consistent the whole way through into Fairfield, so I asked this historical society to make a recommendation, they have the parcel that's in your book that's outlined in yellow, has a dwelling on it, that's the need for this. So historical society came back, said Huff Road, it's got military family connections to that area, sends it over to Fairfield, they said that was reasonable for them as well. Well, if that's agreeable, we would name those from Old Schoolhouse Road, north walk down to Bear Mountain Road in Fairfield, Huff Road.
Well, except Huff Road is, you know, name.
We're not gonna get lost here. The motion, second?
Any further, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody.
And I actually.
Thank you. Uh, with, with all the news lately, I thought I would come with a update on firefighting foam. So we have in inventory about a hundred and thirty gallons of firefighting foam, uh, and this made the news lately down in, uh, Brazil.
PFAS.
Every darn, every darn day. And the concern is PFAS, so we have, um, about sixty gallons, uh, on trucks in tanks, mobile, on the, as part of foam tanks on trucks, we have about seventy gallons in five gallon pails storage. Uh, all of our foam is, um, class A foam, which is for ordinary combustibles, not jet fuel or oil or petroleum products, but it's for house fires or woods fires or something like that, so it's class A foam. And we have, uh, two slightly different products, both class A foam. Uh, I have the trade names here, it's, it's irrelevant for this meeting, uh, they're both class A, but we have ten pails of one type and four pills of another. I have data sheets on both of them that both say, and I'll quote it, does not contain PFAS chemicals commonly found in fluorinated class B foam concentrates. So, um, initial indications, and I've thought this for a while, is that we do not have PFAS containing firefighting foam. Uh, but I am gonna make one more phone call to the D E P, just to talk to their expert about it. I, I given the nature of the beast, there's probably some differing opinions out there. Um, it seems pretty cut and dried to me with the data sheet that says it does not from a response to a chemical company in the US, but, um, I just had some follow-up questions, and I'll bring that back to the board at some point. But we do keep about a hundred and thirty gallons on hand at any given time, and it seems on the data sheets, not contained.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you, like, coming to do the diligence for that one, and, yeah.
Thank you. We'll check into it further, okay?
Man, he didn't come to us asking for money, that's impressive, thank you, bro. I thought it was gonna be like, oh, ours has it, we need another twenty.
All right, uh, executive session, first of course.
Motion.
Motion A, second, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody.
Ten years from now, we call it death.
That's two years off.
That's exactly what Dave says, that's the new.